Good evening, everyone. We'll call our meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pogancorne, here. Councilmember Scribner, here. Councilmember Wiggins, here. Mayor Protim Davies, here. And Mayor Smith, here. Everyone is present, thank you.
If you please stand for invocation this evening. We have Bishop Paul Eisenzimmer from the Tatchby Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Thank you for coming.
Part of your congregation, as I recall. As we gather together tonight, City Council, we ask that thou would watch over us, that thou would guide us in many decisions there are to make. I said thou would bless our community in Tatchby that we may continue to grow together, that we may be able to solve problems in ways that it hasn't happened before. I said thou would also bless our community and our country. Bless us with rain, that we may get through the droughts, and with time, that we may be able to spend time with each other. Say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Joan, were you listening to the pledge?
Salute, pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are marked with an asterisk. They're considered non-controversial, and they'll be taken with one roll call vote unless anyone from the public or the council wants something removed from consent for separate discussion.
I would like to remove number five so we can have a talk about Mountain Festival. It says on the poster that just happens to me this morning.
Any other items from the public, the council? Do I have a motion to approve with item number five removed? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogancorne?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to approve the consent agenda with item five removed.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to, we're going to swear Sergeant James Clark with the oath of office and the badge, if he would come forward.
Raise your right hand and just say yes. I, James Clark, just only affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Yes.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard. Thank you, sir.
And he's got his wife, Tanika, and his daughter that are going to pin his badge for him tonight. Who's got the badge?
Can I get that one back?
Sergeant Clark comes to us from LA County Sheriff. Again, very experienced, over 10 years of experience. He's already been with us for a month. Already made a really strong impression in the community and with our staff here, so we're just really happy to have him. Again, family active in the community, so really a pleasure to bring him on board. So congratulations. Thank you, LA.
Next item is certificate of recognition for Stacy Curry. Good to see you.
Hi.
The Tatchby City Council and the City of Tatchby would like to recognize and thank Stacy Curry for your service as Treasurer of the City of Tatchby. On behalf of the Tatchby City Council and the entire community, we appreciate your dedication to our city and your service to our residents for two years. Your commitment to this important role has been vital in the financial transparency of our municipality and appreciated by the citizens of Tatchby. Thank you for your service, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Stacy. Public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to bring something to our attention in the council that's not on the agenda this evening?
We do have some cards.
Yes.
Diane Doach.
If you would, Diane, is that okay? Or we could bring a mic to you if you like. Doesn't matter. You're fine. Right there. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
It's good to be here. I have two areas of concern. At Robinson and Tatchby Boulevard, across Robinson there is no curb. I wandered up in the middle of the street one day. But because our Tatchby residents are so great, a lady got out of stop. There were, I guess it was two or three cars stopped. Lady got out, told me I was in the middle of the street, walked me back and informed me there was no curb, which is why I wandered up in the middle of the street and helped me to walk down Robinson to get to City Hall. Secondly, the audible signals in Tatchby, according to federal law, are supposed to be audible from six feet away. Ours are not. I fortunately have a guide dog who finds the button on the signal, but it's still, it would be nice to know that we're coming up to one. The ones on Valley and Mountain Dew is one of them. And the signals at the corner are busy business section corner on Valley and, oh shoot.
Tucker Road, huh?
Tucker Road, yeah. Those aren't audible either. We actually have to walk around the corner and be right next to the south sign before this, the audible signal, before I can find it. So if you could turn the volume up, they're supposed to be audible from six feet away. And when you go out to check that, please close your eyes at six feet away and see if you can hear the signal, because that's the only way I can identify them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be happy to address both issues and get back to you. You left your information for us to contact you.
Left a card, yes, sir.
Absolutely.
When I live in the city.
I can keep your arm.
All right. Greg, did you have anything?
We appreciate the concerns. Safety is number one for the City of Tatchby, and we'll look into one of those. Tatchby Boulevard and Robinson does have curbs, so maybe I'll call you and we can talk a little more about what your comment was. There are curbs there. But then also we'll work with Caltrans, because this is the city end Caltrans issue. But we're going to look into it first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for bringing it to us.
You're not in the media there.
We will call you. So Don Marsh, our Public Works Director is in the audience, so we'll be contacting you first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
There, we also have Thomas Lucarell.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Thomas Lucarell, and we reside at 818 Beach Street. And I had called before the pandemic about the lack of a speed sign on Beach Street. We have a racetrack with people up and cheering who are flying down to Valley. And I was told on the phone there's a speed sign over on Mill. They're not driving down Mill Street in a racetrack. They need to see a sign on Beach Street. We've lost our cat. It was hit out there on the street. We've got children and, of course, my wife, who is visually impaired. And it's not safe. And I mean, and we've had officers come out to the house, and they talk about how fast it's a racetrack. The alternative, four-way stop at, uh, which I know is going to be a significant expense. So it's City Council's choice. But you get, I'm not sure which one needs to be done, but it is a dangerous place because they fly down. Not everybody, but enough that it's not safe. That's my concern. It's either a speed sign or a four-way stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, did you want to comment?
Jay, our city engineer does have a comment on this.
Yes, yeah. So your timing is excellent. The way we handle these types of requests, which we get on a regular basis for, you know, just different traffic concerns around town, is we have a meeting about quarterly, the Public Works Director, Police Chief, and myself to review any requests of this nature and then to contact back whoever has contacted us, letting them know what we've determined we should do to try to remedy the issue, whether it's more enforcement or the addition of a stop sign. So your timing is perfect. We have one of those meetings scheduled for tomorrow. So if we have his contact information?
I can join.
Great. So we've got this today, and so I'll have my staff contact you back after we meet and let you know what we think of the situation, what we can do to help.
Perfect, I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Absolutely. Is there anyone else?
We also have Jeanette Power with the Chamber. She was to speak about Mountain Festival. I don't know if you want to wait till item five since it was pulled up.
Let's wait for item five for the festival. Do we have any public comment other than that? Come on forward. Good evening.
Corey Torres with the Park District. I just wanted to share that, not this past Sunday, but the Sunday before, we had the Tatchby Old Tamper's event. We hosted it at Central Park. It was a wonderful day in the park, well attended by Tatchy residents who have been here for a number of years. It's a very celebrated event. Well, it's a great tradition that we look forward to putting on every year, and just wanted to thank city staff and the council for your support and contribution and sponsorship to that event. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes. Anyone else? All right, then. Item number five is with the special benefit application, and that's under the City Clerk's report? Yes?
Sure thing. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, I won't go too into this since it was a consent item, but this is the 59th Annual Mountain Festival and Car Show to be held from August 19th through the 21st. There's many events that encompass, you know, the Mountain Festival and everything. So what, I guess, what was your question?
I love Mountain Festival. When I didn't live here, I came to Mountain Festival for years and years and years. So, but I just want everyone to understand that a lot of the things that we do impact the general fund. And this impacts the general fund about $15,000. We don't want to quit doing that, but we want you to be aware that there are all kinds of things that come out of the general fund that people don't think of. You know, well, why can't you do such and such? Well, because we're doing it. So I just wanted to note that, and I think Mountain Festival is a wonderful thing. But I just want everyone to be aware that a lot of the things that we do in the city that the city helps sponsor doesn't impact the general fund.
Thank you. Would you like to come on up and give us an overview?
Absolutely. So hello. I'm Jeanette Power. I'm the president of the Greater Tatchby Chamber of Commerce, and we are putting on the 59th Mountain Festival. And thank you very much for your support. You're right, it does cost a lot of money, and it's, well, I think we estimate 30,000 people who come to this community, and we're so fortunate to have them and their support and hopefully their money. But it does, it is a strain on the city, and I understand that. And I also understand the budgets. I think it costs the Chamber roughly $23,000 from our side. And it's a very costly event, but it's a fantastic event for our community. But I do know the streets, barricades, the extra policing, the cleaning up afterwards, from specifically like the parade and whatnot, and controlling the streets. It is a big responsibility, for sure. But we're very excited about this year's festival. I brought with you guys, or with me today, the new guide. I'll hear this out later if you like. And one of the pages in here, we have a section on our local businesses, which is something new that we've done. Our local artisans who will be at the festival is a fantastic feature. We got a lot of positive feedback, and we're looking forward to that. And as crazy as this is, I'm already planning the 60th. It's true, because that's going to be a monumental event. So later I will give these to you, but inside this is actually something that I came across from the 1976 Mountain Festival Guide, which is right here. But they had a tribute to a 100-year celebration of the branding irons, the Tatchby branding irons. And next year, one of the things we're going to do is have the branding iron beer garden. Every table will be dedicated to one of the past branding irons of our community. We're really looking to focus on the culture of the community, the history of the community, and promoting that. And we also love the feedback of the city as to what they would like to see as well. We're working with the Heritage League, the Tatchy Community Theater, the Gemology Show. We're already planning the 60th because it's really important to us. That's pretty spectacular. But I also want to let you know that if you have any questions or concerns about this year's Mountain Festival, I'm here to answer anything that you may have.
Thank you. Did anyone in public have any questions? From the council?
Yes, I just want to thank you, Jeanette. I know that you stepped in in a difficult moment in time, and this was a lot to take on without the transition that might have been having not lost Ida. And so I just want to applaud you and your whole volunteer system and board for continuing on under difficult circumstances. I do think that this is an important event that is an iconic part of our community. I, too, like Susan, you know, knew about Mountain Festival and came up here for that even as a non-resident, and really appreciated what Tatchy had to offer. And I'm one who, you know, moved up here because I understood what this community has to offer, and so I appreciate the work that you are doing, the work that the Chamber has done to showcase our community through this event. So thank you for the work you've done under tough times. Don't lose heart. I know that it's a big job, and you're getting through your first year, but just know that the community appreciates you.
Well, thank you. We've had lots of assistance to include the city, parks and rec, numerous sponsors. I couldn't have done it, and this has been happening for so long that there are systems in place, and so people have helped me navigate that. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, then. Do I have a motion to approve item number five as read by title only?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogancorne?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to approve the 59th Annual Tatchy Mountain Festival and agreement between the City of Tatchy and the Tatchy Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Item number six.
All right. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, this is in regards to the city treasurer vacancy. So due to the resignation of city treasurer Stacy Curry, the Tatchy City Council will need to consider options for filling the vacancy to complete the term that expires in November of 2024. So we have two options. The first option would be to appoint that would allow the council to advertise to fill the vacancy within the next 30 to 60 days, dependent upon how long you'd like to advertise. Because the vacancy occurred in the first half of Ms. Curry's term of office and less than 130 days prior to the next election, which is in November, the person appointed to fill the vacancy would hold the office for the remainder of the term. So we can't take it to the upcoming election. It's too late as far as the timing goes with that. The second option would be to do a special election. In that case, you could appoint a resident until the next regularly scheduled election with the county of Kern. Unfortunately, the county of Kern was not able to give me a date on when their next regularly scheduled election would be. So we're looking at more than likely June or November of 2023 for that. So that would, of course, incur quite a bit of cost if we did a special election, because it's not our normal election. You're looking at anywhere from probably 10 upwards of $30,000 for that election, because there's a share of cost with that. So if you just were to appoint, then you're just looking at the advertisement costs, about $175 per advertisement. So we would recommend that you would appoint, and you can let me know if you decide to go that direction, how long you would like to advertise for, and when you'd like this brought back.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment? Council discussion.
I am. I like option one.
Anyone else?
I agree. I don't want to spend $20,000 for a special election. We have other things that we need to take care of. So I think we need to see what, advertise it and see who applies for it, then we'll make a decision at that time.
Christina?
I don't know if we need a motion.
Yes.
I'm going to offer the motion that we go ahead and appoint in order to just realize the cost savings. And I don't know if you need exact details in that motion regarding the number of advertisements.
Would you like to bring it back? Maybe first meeting in October, then we can advertise according to that when you would like to appoint.
I will make that motion as suggested. Thank you.
All right, second. All right. All in favor? All right. Aye.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Aye.
Councilmember Pogancorne?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to direct staff to advertise for the appointment of a city treasurer to fulfill the remainder of the current term until November 2024.
And you're going to bring that back to us in October?
Yeah, so we will advertise for that, and then we will plan to make the appointment at the first meeting in October.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Minus Correctors Report. Item number eight. This is for RSip Petroleum.
Mayor Smith, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSip Petroleum.
All right. Is there any discussion from the public on this item? From the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogancorne?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to authorize the disbursement of bills for RSip Petroleum with a recusal from Mayor Protim Davies.
Thank you. Item number 11. Police Chief report.
Good evening, Mayor Smith. Councilmembers, item half. This evening is the proof of purpose of a new 2022 Dodge Charger. We had budgeted two new police vehicles that was adopted by council when we did our budget here this year. We put out the bid to three locations for one police vehicle. Only one of those locations actually had the vehicle that we were able to get. It happened to be the second highest bid, and that was Hunter Dodge Chrysler Jeep down in Allen Valley. All the bids were responsive. Again, two of them weren't able to provide the vehicle. Based on the limited availability of vehicles, we took it to the city manager. The city manager approved emergency purchase of that vehicle. So we made the purchase on August 1st and took delivery of the vehicle on that date. So we would ask that the council approve that purchase as previously budgeted in the police department.
All right, thank you. Is there any public discussion? Council discussion.
Yeah, chief, did we remove all the other stuff off the used car and put it on the new car? Sirens, lights?
No. This is, the vehicle that we purchased is again an administrative vehicle, and we're going to tell them we've taken another vehicle that's got license sirens on it that's getting pushed down to the line for line use.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, do I have a motion to approve? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogancorne?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to approve the purchase of one new police vehicle from Hunter Dodge Chrysler Jeep in the amount of $45,195.96.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number 12. Public Works. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Mayor Smith, councilmembers, thank you. Item I have for you tonight is regarding our Dennison Water Main. So Dennison Water Main is a 14-inch water main that runs from the, what we call a Highline Tank. It runs along Highline over to Dennison and then down Dennison to eventually Tatchee Boulevard. That line serves several different areas in town, particularly the Orchard Glen Housing Development, Ash Village, everything east of Dennison on Tatchee Boulevard and then to high school. This portion, the portion particularly from Highline down to the high school was built during, in 2003, as part of the high school construction. It was actually built by the Tatchee Unified School District. As typical with infrastructure projects like this, after they built it and commissioned it, then they turned it over to the city to own and operate. So we've owned and operated that since it was constructed. Within a very short period of time after construction, the pipeline began to have failures, leaks, and we've actually had seven leak, or sorry, six leaks over the last seven years and the most recent was on August 8th. The cause of the leaks are, the failures are a little bit up for debate, but there is two things we know. One is that the pipeline was not really constructed per the proper standards. The pipeline was not bedded with sand. There was big rocks right up against the pipeline. And in addition to that, around the time of this construction, there was known to be some material defects in several lots of piping. We can't really prove that this was part of that, but we suspect that that was contributing to the failures as well. So we've known about this, the leaks becoming more frequent. We decided in 2021 that we should really schedule and start getting this pipeline replaced. So we hired a comp to do engineering work and that design work was basically completed and then sat on a shelf ready for construction whenever we were ready to pull the trigger. We had budgeted that work for next fiscal year, '23, '24, but given the increasing frequency of failures, it's staff's recommendation that we accelerate the schedule on that and move it up to this fiscal year. Fiscal impact, over the next two years, really there is no fiscal impact. We either pay for it this year or we pay for it next year. There are reserves in the water fund available for this, so the net is really not, there's no significant fiscal impact. As a matter of fact, there's a chance we could actually get a better price doing it today than we would two years from now. So chances are prices aren't going to go down between now and then. So staff's recommendation is to authorize staff to solicit bids for the Dennison Water Main replacement project. Just one side note, you're not actually approving the project to go forward, you're just approving us to go out to bid. So once we get bids, then you would approve the award of those construction contracts.
All right. Did you have a map?
I do.
I thought it was in, I saw it.
Yeah, the portion of line that we're talking about is actually from Highline to Pinion. Just as a side note, there is a portion we've recently discovered on the Long Highline as well. We have not had as many failures there and it appears as though that's in much better shape. So we will proceed with engineering to that part of the line as well and move forward with scheduling that in the next few years.
Is the pressure higher where it's failing right now?
It's not really a pressure issue. It's really an instruction issue.
Okay. Is there any comment from the public on this? From the council? Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I thank you for your work on this. In my experience, the cost you will bear in maintaining this over the next year or so until it's scheduled, I think it is a really compelling case to expatize. So I appreciate your recommendation. I do think that, you know, in addition to what you cited as the construction costs likely going up, I hate to see us spend money to, you know, just limp along when we know these repairs have to be made anyway. So I appreciate that and I think that's important that the, you know, residents understand that we are going to have to spend money with the years you cited and the number of leaks, you know, we probably will experience more leaks between now and then.
Thank you. All right. Any other council comments?
And what did we learn from this?
Well, we have much more robust inspections now than we did 20 years ago. So can't speak for what happened back then, but clearly it was not properly.
Right. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, there's no warranty on this stuff from the prior, whoever did the school. Typically, there's a one-year construction warranty. Yeah, we just got to make sure we use clean sand. I mean, years doing it myself, so we put boulders out of the hole that are the size of a bolt site. Yeah.
Yep. So it should last a lifetime? All right. If there's no more comment, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencor?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to authorize staff to solicit bids for the Dennison Water Main replacement project.
Thank you. Development Services Director report.
Good evening, again. Good evening. For the record, I started here in 2004 and in 2006, we instituted brand-new city standards from the ground up. So we made significant changes in the way we construct our pipelines in that period of time. So rest assured, we are paying close attention. Lot of new water line going in the ground right now and we're paying close attention. So first item I have for you is the recordation of track map number 6248. So this is the 30 lot housing development that's located at the southern end of Robinson, immediately south of the C Street extension. So this tentative map was approved prior to my time here as city engineer in December of 2003 and by resolution number 5803 for that 30 lots on seven and a half acres. We did include a copy of that map and that gives you good information about the location. So subsequent to the approval of the tentative map, we went through an extensive period of extensions of these maps due largely to congressional action at the state level. So I think I've discussed this before with you guys. A lot of track maps were created back in '04, '05, '06 during that initial boom period. And then after the economy change, the state legislature from the top down, regardless of what we wanted to do, mandated that municipalities continue to allow these maps to exist in case the economy changes and the developer wants to move them forward. And so we have finally gotten to the time period for this track. As you guys will recall, I brought it to you a few times. We've worked with a couple of developers to try to get the project finished. It's a good development. It's just an extension really of the downtown area and some much-needed homes. And so we're finally there. So tonight marks the moment in which you all, if you approve the action tonight, will approve staff and the mayor and the clerk to sign the map, which actually will physically subdivide the land into the 30 lots. Simultaneous to that action is the signing of a subdivision agreement, which the city attorney and I have been working on producing. The developer has already signed. That subdivision agreement maps out the final amount of time they have to complete the infrastructure. They've already begun construction and sets that timeline at one year and requires them to post bonds such that if the economy changes and they change their mind, we have the security of knowing that we won't have incomplete infrastructure. And so I've spoken with the advocate just last week. They are still moving forward with the project and believe that the housing market is strong enough to continue to support the 30 homes that are proposed there. And like I said, construction's ongoing. Sewer line's already been placed. Water is being placed now and will be for the next couple of weeks and then they'll move immediately there to curb gutter and asphalt. So you'll see progress continue in that location. So my recommendation is that you authorize the recordation of track map number 6248, subject to the execution of an improvement agreement between the city of Tatchee and the subdivider Saticoy Development Company LLC. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Come on up, please.
I just have one question with regards to the finite amount of water that we have in the Cummings Water District. At what point does the city council have to control the development and recordation of these tracks? Because we are hearing that there's a finite amount of water that Cummings is going to be allowed to pump for us. At what point withdraw?
We'd be happy to answer that question for you right now.
Thank you.
Can we take a stab at it?
Okay. Complex and active issue. The answer is that the city's water is derived from more than one source. The city derives the bulk of, like 95% of our water from groundwater through native water rights that we own. That is not connected in any way to the amount of water that the Water District pumps up the hill from the California Aqueduct. The city has water. We have excess water. We can support these 30 homes. It is a part of a larger conversation that is absolutely going on as to where that line is someday in the future. And I don't have an answer for that question. That's, that's an extensive conversation. Don Schroeder's smiling at me because he knows that we're actively involved in that. But I can say with confidence that the city has the water for these 30 lots. We would not be suggesting this approval unless we were 100% sure that we are just fine adding these 30 homes.
Did they purchase your, their water rights or did they bring someone with them?
They did not. They will be, as they construct homes, which is the moment when actual water use happens, they will be paying an end loan fee, which compensates us for the water rights that we have been purchasing. As the council knows, in the last year, we've successfully purchased over 100 acre feet of water rights. And so they will be compensating us for that as they construct the homes. I warn everybody too, we had the same thing happen in Alta Estates back in 2006 and they went through the whole process of building the infrastructure and then the economy changes and the homes are now getting built 15 years later. So this is an important step. It prepares this land to receive a home, but until they pull a permit for a new house, we don't have a new house. So it will all happen in good time, but we are prepared for the water needs of this neighborhood.
And we'll give more details of elevations and what the houses will look like and other details like that.
The developer's obligated to bring me an architectural suite, which will be presented to the planning commission for consideration and approval.
All right.
Yes.
But to answer your question, the city itself has ample water for this project and many more, but for this project, what we're talking about, we're well in advance of having the needs, the water for this. Any other comments from the public? From the council? All right. Thank you, Jay. So do I have a motion to approve this item?
I'll make it.
Go ahead.
I'll make it motion.
I'll second it. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencor?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to authorize the recordation of track map, map number 6248 as presented.
Thank you very much. Item number 16.
Yes, sir. The next item is the 2022 Local Street Grind and Overlay Project. We hope you appreciate our very exciting title for the name of this project. We're running out of good ideas. The engineering department, it's not really our forte. Anyway, this project seeks to improve Anita Drive, portions of Elm Street, Maple Street, and C Street due to cracking and failing asphalt, utilizing a concrete grind and overlay, which simply put is where they remove a couple of inches of asphalt and place new asphalt in its place. So we have a little map indicating the areas that we received. So we prepared and solicited bids for the completion of this project. We opened those bids on August 10th. The results are listed in the staff report. Just on a note there, we received six bids, which is an excellent number of bids and very competitive from a numbering perspective, which is a good indication that we had a very competitive bid and we're getting a good price. We were surprised, actually pleasantly surprised by the pricing. We had, the engineer's estimate was up over $700,000 for the work and it looks like we're going to be able to award the project at $560,000. So happy with that, that number from an engineering perspective. In compliance with the Public Contract Code, we reviewed the bids to consider whether they were responsive. The bid provided by Nagel Earthworks, the low parent bidder, was deemed to be responsive. Fiscally, this project is budgeted. The construction and construction administration costs for this project were funded through a mixture of gas tax funds, streets and roads, and general fund. I put the respective amounts there and they were adopted in the fiscal 22 or 23 budget for this project. So just to highlight there, this is, this is something, a few years ago, we were finally getting into a financial position to start grabbing some general fund money and putting them into some road projects. And as you guys well know, those things are shifting as the state is shifting and government is shifting. And so this, we are not able to continue adding general fund money to projects like this in the future, but since it was here for this project, we want to do this, obviously spend the money for its purpose. So anyway, going forward, we will not have as many funds available for this purpose. But we do want to recommend you award the 2022 Local Street Grind and Overlay Project to Nagel Earthworks in the amount of $562,852.50 and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the construction costs or $56,285. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comment or questions from the public? From the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I've never heard of Nagel done work for us in the past.
Yeah, they built a parking lot right next door.
Okay.
So that's the one project we have worked with them on.
Okay. I have never, that was before my time, so that's why I haven't seen anything from them.
Yeah, smaller outfit and that's probably why their bid amount is, is less than the number two bidder or the other groups is, that's what we smile. So we're familiar with them. We've worked with them in the past and we're prepared to work with them on this project.
That's what kind of made my big, big change, or big difference in the price.
Yeah.
So make sure we stay on top of it and make sure we're spending the city's money, sort of the people's money correctly.
Yes, sir.
But we have that extra $100,000. Could we do another street?
Unfortunately, there's, yeah, the answer is a technical no because of the nature of change order, negotiation and law.
We'd have to.
It gets kind of sticky. You know, if we have excess budget when this is over, let us finish it and see how much it's going to cost to get us through it. And if we have excess money, we might be able to relocate into a slurry seal project that we have, but I'd have to consult with the city manager and the finance director about whether they might be happy to grab that money back too and stash it away for a weekend.
Oh, I think they would.
So, yeah.
All right. And the timeline on this?
We're going to start immediately. The intent is to complete the construction prior to winter setting in. So usually projects like this, we did one like this last year, went pretty quick on Green Street and Davis. We were able to kind of, with relatively limited pain for the traveling public. And so that's our goal is to work with the, the tricky one on this is you'll notice Anita is right in front of the junior high school. So we are taking extra special care to coordinate that construction activity so it has no impact to the school. So the way we're going to do that is the grinding work should be able to be done after school hours or on a weekend and the road is drivable after the grinding work is done. You'll just have that little lift that sometimes you drive over in a construction zone and then paving should take one day. And so we will probably schedule that for a weekend or, you know, a weekend. So we're going to work extra hard not to interrupt school traffic, which is already chaotic in that area. So we're aware and focused on that.
And then lastly, would you go over how we choose? Cause we have a priority list of all the streets, what the condition is and who's next.
Sure. Yeah. Public Works Director Marsh has spent extensive time cataloging every single street in the city with a pavement index, which is a measurement of the quality of that pavement. And it's shifting all the time for obvious reasons, right? When we improve a road, it shifts up and when a road just, years go by, it shifts down. And so utilizing that program and we have, you can utilize the pavement management program to draw out priority lists based upon what your budget looks like and the types of road remedies that you want to employ. And so we look to, the general principle is that first things first are to maintain the good roads in good quality. It sounds a little contrary, you know, contrary to natural thinking, but it costs pennies to keep a good road looking good and it costs dollars to rehab a road that's in significant disrepair. And so step one is to maintain those. One of the other items I'm, engineering's working on right now is a slurry seal project around town. That's where we go and we, we're focused on the better quality roads in town, keeping them rejuvenated so they'll last longer. And then as we can find pots of money or grant money, that's when we're targeting the roads that need more significant rehabilitation.
All right then. With that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokencor?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to award the 2022 Local Street Grind and Overlay Project to Nagel Earthworks as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd just like to say a personal thank you to Stacy Curry. Stacy is an institution, part of our, part of our group, solid, rock solid, and we're going to best her and we really appreciate your, your trust really on us and everything that we do in the city. So thank you, Mrs. Curry. That's the farmers market, two more farmers markets. So this Thursday and then next. And the season just went by that quick, but the farmers market was incredibly successful this year. Jessica, City Hall, she's managed the market for us, took over from Mariana. We've had a lot of great vendors. It's just, it's just an amazing time. Really showcases our city and our community and we're really, really happy that we've been able to put the farmers market on the chair. And of course, we're planning already for next year's farmers market and we've got some really good ideas.
Super.
So that's, that's going on. Chalk on the Walk, so the Tatchee Valley Arts Association, the big chalk on the walk event this last Saturday. So if you walk downtown, Green Street, Tatchee Boulevard, others, there's some amazing art on the sidewalks with chalk and some of it will blow your mind. So I encourage you to go check out the chalk on the walk if you have not done so yet. Cheers to Charity event was hosted by the city of Tatchee, the Tatchee Municipal Airport at Aviator Park on Saturday night. It appeared to be a sellout. It's a great event. It has been for many years. Mary Beth Garrison and her crew of volunteers put this event on and all the money goes back to charity. They select several charitable organizations throughout the year and I'm sure that there will be lots of money this year and we'll be pushing it right back into our community. So thank you to Cheers to Charity for a great event. And then of course, Mall Festival. That's the granddaddy of all and we're super excited to be a partner with the Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Wiggins, Councilmember Wiggins pointed out, it does take money to put these things on, that's for sure. It doesn't happen by accident. Money doesn't grow on trees. Priorities have to be met, that's for sure. But super happy that the Chamber of Commerce and Janette has risen to the occasion big time in the last couple of months. There's a lot to do, but lots of volunteers, lots of good people putting in all the events and that's coming up here this weekend, of course. And then just wanted to, you know, every once in a while I do this, but you know, when Don comes to the podium or Jay or others, we're so blessed with amazing employees that live and work in an amazing city and community. These people are so trustworthy, so honest, work so hard to make this city a glowing light on top of the hill. I'm really proud of what they do and of course, council supporting them. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Councilmember Reports. Christina?
I, Greg just was, stole my, my same thought, you know? I just, I think as we reflect, my children just went back to school last week and we reflected on all the events, the Fourth of July, Art 2022, and you know, just so many
Fourth of July, Art 2022, and, you know, just so many wonderful events to showcase our community, I just, I think it was a really successful season, and I'm just really blessed and proud to be a part of a community that pulls together to put on wonderful events, to support our nonprofits, to cultivate a culture of family, you know, and I just think that this year really was nice to get back to that, especially with the couple of years where that was compromised in a lot of ways. So I just am ready for the fall, but I just really reflect fondly on wonderful season of events here, and I think our county looks to us for that. You know, it's so hot everywhere else, and it's, you know, it's safe here, the air is clean here. I think it's really wonderful that we create this opportunity for our entire region to enjoy, and I think that, you know, the city has done an excellent job of the farmer's market this year, and really elevating that experience, so that was one that stood out, and I just want to add my voice to that choir.
Thank you very much. Michael?
Yeah, last Sunday, a week ago Sunday, I emceed the Old Timers Picnic again, and never been proud to be, I've never been more proud to be called an old timer. It's a wonderful event put on by, we have a lot of sponsors, Corey Torres is still here, but we, it was a great time, had a lot of comments from people coming back, some of them had reunions, and some were here in this, thankful how beautiful the town looks and how the parks are kept up, and it was just a lot of positive things that were said. We had a great event, I didn't get run out of town, so I guess I did okay.
Very well.
But just one of the many things that we put on, or Parks and Rec, all of our town puts on for everything that we do in town, and bring back people, and had a lot of, lot of positive feedback from everybody.
It was, thank you.
You know, Chief Crager and his crew keep track of us, to keep us safe.
I bet those old timers get rowdy.
Yeah. We talk about events a lot, but you know, infrastructure and public safety, and Chief Crager, and we've got Division Chief Kennesaw and Kern County Fire there, they're watching over us, making sure that we have a safe town also.
This has nothing to do with anything, but it's beginning of Warrior football season, and I have a senior playing defense, and so it's going to be an exciting time. We start next Friday in Ridgecrest, you know, probably be 117, but you know, go Warriors. But I just want to urge all of you, whatever your kids do, participate with them, because sometimes we want to kill them, but it is a lot of fun.
Okay, we won't tell them that. All right. John?
Oh, I'm just glad that the Fast Track Cherry Lane is complete with its water line repair, and also looking forward to potholes being filled. And after Mountain Fest, we have the Apple Fest, so we have something to look forward to in the fall, it's always fun, so those are my little thank you notes.
And I, was that the Old Timers Picnic? I have to say, ditto, 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 it was, what you both said, it was very good.
Oh, and I missed one, this weekend, there's going to be several reunions, so if you know people that, and I don't know what years they are, at VFW and also at the depot, and I won't be at the depot one, but with kids, but, you know.
Very good.
So look forward to that. Lots of old timers.
Yes.
There you go.
From far away, some of them. I went down to the chalk on the walk, have our family from Seattle down, and one of my grandsons said, I'd like to do that, they have empty squares, and you pay the fee, and they give you the chalk and everything, and just pick a photo, and they just, they just create, it was really neat, so that was fun. I did have one comment for Chief, I got a call, I should have called it in by now, but on Mill Street, maybe Extra Patrol, Mill and Maple, or Maple and Carroll Wakeham, that stop sign, I've gotten people saying that they just don't even stop sometimes, so whatever, it's like, you can't sit there all day waiting for someone to blow through that. And then one, I asked for any markings or license numbers, they, this one person, said this one guy goes by so fast, it's a blur, so all he said was, it's a white car with a license plate in the back that's got blue lights, so that's my passing on to you. All right. But I know that, I was out with my grandkids two nights ago, or the night before last, up above the developments across from you by Warrior Park just south of there, we were stargazing because there's no streetlights yet, and I was visited, we were visited, the four of us out there by two officers just checking through, and it was nice, you know, you're, you're having a good time, but they were on the, on their route, and just happened to see two at once, and people do say, it's nice to see them around town. And then the last thing was, at the Saturday chalk on the walk, I went to get some water at the Chevron, and the door, the glass was out. There was a burglary, you want to come in or just?
No, I don't have anything on that right now, so I'll have to get back.
The lady inside said, well, before the guy got out, he busted the front door, 6:15 in the morning, by the time, before he got out, the police caught him. That's pretty dark, alarm was off, and they got him. So tell the crew, thank you very much. All right, then. Okay, that's it for now, we're going to go into closed session, if there's anything to report, we'll come back out here.